Can you raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I
I
State your name.
Vicente Sarmiento.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will and will faithfully discharge.
That I will and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I
I
Please state your name.
Thay Viet Phan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Councilwoman.
Thank you.
Por favor, levante su mano derecha y repite.
So please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Dí su nombre.
I state your name.
I, Jesse Lopez.
Lo juro solemnemente.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Que voy a apoyar y defender.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
La Constitución de los Estados Unidos.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
Y la Constitución del Estado de California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Contra todos los enemigos.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Extranjero y nacional.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
Que tendré verdadera fe y lealtad.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
A la Constitución de los Estados Unidos.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
Y la Constitución del Estado de California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Que tomo esta obligación libremente.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Sin ninguna reserva mental.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
O propósito de la evasión.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
Que voy a descargar bien y fielmente.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
Los deberes en los que estoy a punto de asumir.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Felicidades.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That was good.
Raise your right hand. Now, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take the obligation freely.
That I take the obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Hi, I'm Vicente Sarmiento. And I want to begin by thanking the voters for electing me as your next mayor. I'm incredibly humbled by your confidence. And I promise to work hard to honor the trust you've extended to me. As we all know, this election was historic for many reasons. First of all, it is the first time in 26 years that Santa Ana will have a new mayor. We also made history by electing the first and only Bolivian-born mayor of a large city in the United States. But most significant is that the three incoming council members and myself were all either born or raised here. We are literally the sons and daughters of Santa Ana. Genuine homegrown products of this city. Unfortunately, we conduct this installation in the historic shadow of the COVID-19 pandemic. Although we all would have preferred to have these ceremonies in person with our family, friends, and neighbors, we must instead meet this moment and keep ourselves and those around us safe. That said, I'm extremely hopeful that we will be able to celebrate together soon. We can finally see the light at the end of this very long and difficult tunnel. But we must build a virtual bridge from now until vaccines and treatments are available to everyone in our community. Santa Ana, the future is bright. Together, we will see our community get healthy. We will see our kids go back to school. We will see our businesses reopen and get our economy going strong again. And yes, we will put this pandemic in the rearview mirror. You know, this past election was also historic for its record-breaking turnout. There was an almost 80% voter turnout and over 95,000 votes were cast in Santa Ana. By Monday before the Tuesday election, over 50% of eligible voters in Santa Ana had cast their ballots. And a majority of those early votes came from young people ages 18 to 35. In this cycle, the voters spoke clearly and decisively that they wanted to reclaim their government. With this direction, we intend to usher in a new era of community-led priorities and write the next chapter in Santa Ana's history. While being responsible and balanced, our new course must be a departure from the ways of the past. The following is a quote from Franklin Delano Roosevelt. Quote, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much. It is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." Unquote. These words have been a source of inspiration to me and have guided my journey when faced with difficult decisions. Santa Ana is one of the largest cities in the largest state in our union. We must conduct ourselves as such and be bold in our aspirations, but never again ignore the needs of those most vulnerable among us. We must ensure that dignified housing is available and accessible. We must invest and create an environment where our kids can thrive. We can keep our neighborhood safe and make sure that Santa Ana is not the receptacle for all of the county's problems. We must humanely address the problem of the unhoused. We must defend the rights of all immigrants. We must hold all of our city employees accountable and protect the health and welfare of all of our residents. To our staff and city family, I thank you for all the work and professionalism you perform for our residents. And I thank you in advance for your ability to adapt to a new civic culture. My hope is to unleash your talents and skills to better meet the needs of our city. In turn, you have my commitment that your value to Santa Ana and this organization will not only be appreciated, but respected. To our stakeholders, city partners, and network of nonprofit providers, we look forward to continuing to work together. We never forget that your success is our success. To our partners in the private sector, we know you will thrive under this new leadership. We will strive to create a more predictable and collaborative experience for you as we work together to improve our city. To my colleagues, past, present, and future, thank you to those who have served. There is no more noble a cause than serving the public. We appreciate the sacrifice you and your families have made to improve the lives and conditions of our residents. To my colleagues, present and future, I challenge you to join me to chart a new course for our city. One where we inspire our community by uplifting their lives and never letting others define who we are. We have a moment to create our new narrative where no one will ever be ashamed to say they live in Santa Ana. Finally, to my friends and family, thank you to Team Sarmiento for all your hard work and helping me realize this collective goal. Shout out to Carlos, Jose, the Youth for Sarmiento Crew, the DPOC, SCIU Local 721, Unite Here Local 11, y todos los voluntarios que me acompañaron durante este camino largo. Espero que no me abandonen y que sigan trabajando conmigo en este nuevo capítulo de nuestra bella ciudad. To my mom, my wife, my sons Adrián and Diego, my daughter Dahlia, my sister Vicky, my sister Daisy, and countless other extended family. Gracias por el amor, apoyo, paciencia, inspiración que siempre me dan. Thank you once again. And I ask all of you to please be safe and take care of yourselves during these very dangerous times. Stay strong, Santa Ana. Thank you.
Congratulations, Paula. All the way from here at Tost medical center in Boston. I mean, of course, I wish I was there throughout your whole campaign if you're swearing it. But even with school and working at the hospital the whole time, I was supporting you as much as I could. Please know that. Santa Ana is in good hands. And I'm so proud to call you my dad and also to call you the mayor. I love you y te veo pronto.
Mayor Sarmiento, on behalf of the young people of Santana, I want to extend my congratulations to you. It was an honor to volunteer for a campaign that deeply cared about the issues that Santana residents care about, like reducing homelessness, public health, creating safer neighborhoods, affordable housing, and most importantly, investing in our youth and in our future. I think that the future of Santana is incredibly bright. And I know that under your leadership and under the leadership of the new city council, we can reach great heights. I want to congratulate you. And I cannot wait to see the change that you will bring for Santana in years to come.
Buenos días. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Martínez. Soy líder comunitario en esta ciudad. Y me complace mucho el poder darle la bienvenida y felicitar a nuestro nuevo alcalde de parte de la comunidad. Este, al señor Sarmiento, Vicente Sarmiento, que va a ser nuestro nuevo alcalde. Él siempre ha trabajado con la comunidad, sobre todo con las personas que tienen, que no tienen un estatus legal en esta ciudad. Pienso que una sola persona no puede hacer la diferencia, pero si trabajamos en conjunto, organizaciones, líderes comunitarios y personas que nos representan, podemos tener un Santana mejor. Muchísimas gracias. Bienvenido y felicidades a él y a toda su familia. Y muchas gracias.
Hi, I'm Paul Walsh, president of Coast Composites with a sizable manufacturing presence here in the city of Santa Ana. And I want to congratulate you, Vince, on your mayoral win. Really, really excited and happy for you and certainly for the community. I think your calm, practical approach is exactly what both the community and the business community needs in these challenging times. Best of luck to you. Really happy to see the win.
This is Ada Briseño, chair of the Democratic Party in Orange County and co-president of Unite Here Local 11, a union representing cooks, dishwashers, and room attendants. And we're here to congratulate Mayor-elect Sarmiento, City Council member-elect Thay Viet Phan, Jonathan Hernandez, and Jesse Lopez. We're excited for a new beginning. We want to congratulate you all. And we're looking forward to this new council standing for democratic values and working families in Santana. Congratulations.
Hello, Santa Ana. My name is Thay Viet Phan. And I'm proud and honored to serve as the first Vietnamese-American on the Santa Ana City Council. I know we have a lot of work ahead of us. Whether it's to address the COVID-19 pandemic and its effects on our community, addressing the homelessness crisis, or dealing with the lack of affordable housing, I know we'll work together to arrive at positive solutions for all. Once again, thank you to the Santa Ana residents and congratulations to our mayor and my fellow council members. To my Vietnamese community, xin kính chào quý vị. Tên tôi là Thái Việt Phan và Thái Rắc Vinh Dữ. Và là người Mỹ gốc Việt đầu tiên làm nghị viên trong hội đồng thành phố Santana. Thái biết chúng ta còn nhiều điều để giải quyết. Cho dù về virus Corona, giúp người vô gia cư hoặc lo giá tiền nhà rất cao. Thái biết chúng ta sẽ đoàn kết và đưa ra các giải pháp tích cực cho cộng đồng. Một lần nữa, xin cảm ơn cư dân Santana và xin chúc mừng thị trưởng và nghị viên mới. Cảm ơn.
Rồi xuống, nì khóm chmô ang ki rot chi pichipu rot lu nè khong ti krong Santana. Nì khóm xom churum ob o sa to tao krom samajak praksa pi ba thamai nè nì khóm Thay Viet Phan đai ban churhre chi a damnang khong ti krong Santana khong anh nàn đi. Nì khóm bìn mô tân a phiêp đai ban khơi nè nì khóm chi chi sá châm ro hai ban trơi churh dang ma damnang khong bò rot khong ti krong Santana. Nì khóm xom chun po tao nè nì khóm krom praksa pi ba thamai đai ban churh dang đi. Hai nong pichipu rot tang a khong ti krong Santana. Hai bìn xop a phiêp la o si khe dai xop pro pe virea chi pot pi châm gù COVID nan tin tang a khene. Hai nì khóm xom a okon đai ban tân choi nì khóm ao churum thod khong vi to omui đi. Nì khóm a okon nong châm rìp riê.
Ba xom châm rìp xu. Xem ba chmô tai bu. Hai kem ba ban mo ru nè khong ti krong Santana đi. Eo pe bu chnam hai. Kem xom a ob o sa to tao nè nì khóm Thay Viet Phan đai ban chob chnau churh dang chi samajak krom praksa krom nè anh nì. Kem sâng khâm tha nè nì khóm tâ tâ ban phiêp chuk chi samrap damnang thamai chi samajak krom praksa krom đi. Hai kem sâng khâm tha nè nì khóm churum chun nai thoi a sâh kum khumai nong sâh kum da tay da tay tiêt nè khong ti krong Santana. Bìn ga ruu lu khene, bìn phiêp râng mom. Nong gàn tai bìn xop a phiêp la o tang a khene. Xom a okon đai ban chi rû phiêm ao churum nè khóm vi to omui.
Hello, this is Fatana, executive director of the Cambodian Family Community Center, a nonprofit organization serving Santa Ana residents for over 40 years. I would like to send my sincere congratulations and best wishes to council member-elect Thay Viet Phan on being newly elected to Santa Ana City Council. I wish you all success and look forward to partnering with you, other city council members, and the mayor in serving our Cambodian and other diverse community members in Santa Ana. Thank you for inviting us to join this video.
Hello, I am Tría Lee, immediate past chair and current board member of the Vietnamese-American Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of VACOC, I would like to extend a warm congratulations to the newly-elected mayor and council members of the city of Santa Ana. Especially Thay Viet Phan, the first Vietnamese-American on the dais. We could not be prouder of the rich diversity of the new council, which reflects today's American demography. We have full confidence that the council will do the job with the best interest of every constituent at heart. We also want to congratulate the voters for speaking up. No matter how you voted, your vote counted. Again, congratulations to all.
Hi, everyone. This is Jesse Lopez proudly representing Ward 3. As the year comes to an end, I want to thank you for everything that you do for our collective well-being. I also want to thank you for supporting our campaign this past year. I am thrilled to be at your service. And please know that whatever you need, we are here to serve you. I hope you have happy holidays and a wonderful new year.
Hola, soy Jesse Lopez orgullosamente representando el distrito 3. Les agradezco todo lo que han hecho por nosotros este año y cualquier cosa que necesiten, por favor, sepan que estamos aquí para apoyarlos. Les deseo un año nuevo bueno y felices fiestas. Gracias.
We are so excited to see new leadership take the helm here in our city of Santa Ana. Our family goes back multiple generations. And we want to especially congratulate Jesse Lopez and her entire campaign for bringing the community together. We know that she'll be a voice of our values, helping to elevate issues like having more open space for our children, particularly in this challenging time, addressing important, critical issues like how we help support the unhoused here in our city, and of course, navigating this pandemic. Again, we want to give a special congratulations to Jesse and your team. We are here to... So excited to see you lead and we're here to support you along the way.
I want to congratulate our new mayor and city council from the city of Santa Ana. My name is Martha Molina Áviles from the Riverview Neighborhood. And particularly congratulate new council member Jesse Lopez, who is our new representative in Ward 3. I had the pleasure of meeting her while she was running for office. So excited to have a young Latina who I know is going to listen to our concerns and be an incredible leader for us here in Ward 3 and in the city of Santa Ana. Thank you and congratulations.
Congratulations, Jesse. I am so excited for you. You are going to be amazing. It feels so good to know that we have a strong, intelligent woman on our city council that I know is going to bring about incredible change for everyone. Know you have our 100% support during this time. You are going to be amazing. Felicidades, congratulations, abrazos. We're so excited for you. Huge hugs.
Hey, Jesse. Congratulations on winning, council member of Santa Ana. I'm so excited for you. I know you're going to do great things for this community and fight for the people that live here and make it a better place for all of us to live. I'm really happy that I got to vote for you and campaign for you. And I really can't wait to see what you accomplish and how much better you make this community. So, good luck and congratulations. And I can't wait.
Hello, Jesse and everybody else out there watching the video. So congratulations for your victory. I know that there's a whole set of things and issues that are going to be coming before the city council over the next couple of years. You know, just one foot in front of the other. And I'm sure that you guys are all going to do well. Especially Jesse, congratulations. And council member Lopez, congratulations on the hard work that you put into the campaign, the hard work that you're going to keep putting into serving the residents of Santa Ana. And yeah, just look forward to seeing what happens over the next four years. And I'm sure that you and the new council will have an interesting experience up there regardless of what happens. But I wish you all the best and look forward to seeing, yeah, you on the dais. See you all.
Santa Ana, my name is Jonathan Ryan Hernandez. And it is my honor to serve the people of Ward 5. My family's called Ward 5 home for as long as I can remember. Having been here since the 1950s, grown up next to El Salvador Park, I'm a product of Santa Ana Unified School District schools. I understand the excellence that exists within our community. And I plan on helping invest and develop more of it. From the rich cultural history, from the black community to the brown community to the API community that have brought people together. I believe that this community is a community that is worth investing in. I believe that our parks and recreational centers should be safe havens so that we can develop families and children. I believe that city-wide Wi-Fi is future-proofing the city of Santa Ana. I believe that we should remove barriers to education and increase access to early childhood education programs. And more importantly, I believe that we need to create more pathways for college, not prison. My story is the Santa Ana story. And I am looking to bring people together. And that is why it is my honor and my privilege to say thank you to the voters who use their voice to create change this election and elected the people. And it is my duty and my honor to serve you. Thank you very much.
Okay, hi. My name is Daniel Liedem. And I want to give a big shout out and a congratulations to Jonathan Hernandez, who was elected to represent Ward 5 in the city of Santa Ana. Jonathan and I grew up in the same neighborhood. And so, I'm proud of you, bro. I'm looking forward to what you're going to bring to this city. Also, I want to give a big shout out and congratulations to the whole city council, the new members and the members who got reelected. And just looking forward to the great work that you're going to do for the city of Santa Ana coming up.
Hi, I'm Alan Wu. I'm with Santa Ana Unidos. I'm a businessman and resident of Santa Ana. And we just elected a new city council and mayor. And we're looking for a great, great new transformation from this young, vibrant, innovative new city council. My friend Jonathan Ryan Hernandez is part of that generation in the 25-year-old category who's a single father, who's looking forward to lifting up the voices of those that have been unheard. He's paying attention and listening to us neighborhood leaders. And he wants to bring what we want to bring to Santa Ana, and that's change for the better. And congratulations, guys. Girl team.
Hi, I'm Valerie Mescola, vice president of Santa Ana Unified Board of Education. I'd like to thank Councilman Hernandez for inviting me to participate in this video. I'd like to welcome Jesse Lopez as the new councilwoman, Thay Phan as the new councilwoman, and Mayor Vicente Sarmiento. Our city is embarking on a brand-new council, young and innovative. And we're looking forward to all the great things that they're going to do for our youth, for our community, and to make this a prosperous city. As a board member of Santa Ana Unified, I am looking forward to working together with the newly-elected council members and the council as a whole to make education first again in this city. We can work together to bring citywide Wi-Fi. We can work together to make education a beautiful experience for our children. So I am looking forward to the new council and to our new councilman Jonathan Hernandez. Again, thank you for inviting me to participate in this video. I welcome all the new council members and the staff that will be joining us. And please, everyone, stay safe, wear your mask, practice social distancing, and things will get back to normal. But it will be better than normal because of what we've been going through together as a city. And I'm looking forward to the leadership of our new council working alongside with our school district to make things better for our community. Thank you.
I can't emphasize enough how excited I am for my new colleagues to join me on the Santa Ana City Council. To our new mayor and the new council members, congratulations on your election. This is an exciting time for our city. And I look forward in working alongside all of you to move our city forward and in the right direction. The only sad part is, is that I'm no longer the young one. Just going to sting a little, but you know what? It's okay. I'll get over it. I'm looking forward to it. Welcome aboard.
I want to congratulate you on being elected to the Santa Ana City Council. It is truly an honor and a privilege. It is truly an honor and a privilege to serve our community. And I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you and collaborating with you to tackle the challenges that lie ahead of us and to continue to make the Golden City shine. With that, congratulations on being elected to the San Ana City Council.
This is Councilmember Nalida Mendoza. Congratulations to Mayor-elect Vincent Sarmiento, Councilmember Thai Pham, Councilmember Jessica Lopez, and Councilmember Jonathan Hernandez. I am very proud to be on the council with you. I look forward to sharing of our vast knowledge and experience in our respective areas of expertise. I will share the knowledge that I have gained throughout the years as an elected official and I will expect to get some of that knowledge from you so that together we all can work towards getting quality services to the constituents. Congratulations to our new mayor and our council members.